Thank you, thank you very much. Um, my dear colleagues. Uh, my dear colleagues, good afternoon. And thanks for the overwhelming turnout at a very short notice. Uh, on behalf of the veterinary council of Nigeria, of all the board members of the council. I want to say very good afternoon to you and thank you so, so much for the overwhelming support of calling you for this meeting. Uh, and the turnout, honestly, we are so overwhelmed, we are so overwhelmed in the confidence that you have in your council that we can call you at a very short notice so that we'll be able to resolve certain issues to move this profession forward. It is your council, you might remember that uh, when we took over and uh, as council, the first promise we made to you was that we shall be your council and we take you where you want to be. Not where we think you want to be or where we want you to be. So it is in line with that, that we thought it's very, very important we have a this interactive session with you. Initially, uh, for those of us that are on some platforms, we were preparing to have a town hall meeting at uh, at the specified time. But as you are aware, the council has been having a regular council meeting since yesterday. That's the 114th regular council meeting. Because uh, there are a lot of issues that veterinarians want to know. There are a lot of issues that we need to resolve uh, to, in line with our promises to you all. As the veterinary council of Nigeria, we are the regulatory agency of the profession. So we are the police of the profession. And we are supposed to regulate, the mandate is to regulate the knowledge and practice of veterinary profession in Nigeria. And we can't do it alone, even though we regulate um, as uh, provided by the Veterinary Surgeons Act. Whatever it is, we have to be flexible, we have to carry everybody along. There are a lot of agitations recently concerning the College of Veterinary Surgeons in particular and the continuing education program. Uh, because of that, we said we are going to have a town hall meeting. But we feel that at the end of this regular council, 114 regular council meeting, we should be able to um, highlight on those of, those critical issues, our decision or resolutions that the council has reached during the 114 regular council meeting. Especially uh, as it relates to those very serious concern that we have seen on the platforms that are being raised by our own colleagues. And also the last time I was on Speak Out, your questions that were asked and we presented them council and sessions were taken. Uh, now on the College of Veterinary Surgeons Nigeria, on behalf of the entire board members, I want to sincerely apologize to all the uh, uh, students of the college. Okay, Dr. Tungin has to say residents because he's also a student in college, so residents. So on behalf of the council, I want to sincerely apologize to all residents of college for the short, uh, for the long time that we have not really run the college properly. When we came on board as part of our efforts and commitment to ensuring that we give you a very robust, high standard um, college of veterinary surgeons as the services provided and the types of knowledge to prepare you to become consultants. We also, some of us also passed through the college and we also had our own concerns. So the issue of the college, restructuring of the college was one of our priorities as a council. And we took it as one of our roadmaps to make sure that we restructure the council so that we can have value for the time and our resources that we're putting into it. And part of it is that first the council took the decision to dissolve the board of the council of the college so that uh, we will be able, because we didn't want to elect immediately without really coming up with the restructuring into um, enforce. So part of the restructuring or the roadmap development as for the, for the College of Veterinary Surgeons, we had a committee that was set up, not by, not by members, not membership, not, the membership was not only restricted to council members, but across the veterinary profession, we got eminent veterinarians who requisite experiences to sit down and come up with the recommendations. It so that we can turn around our college. They came up with those, with that, those reports in all the seven areas of our roadmap. And we subjected, we further subjected that report to another committee in council to look at it critically and isolate those critical areas that we think that are of importance to us. And they came up with a white paper which they are now subjecting it further to what we call strategic plan, five year strategic plan for the Veterinary Council of Nigeria. However, we were also able to inaugurate, constitute and inaugurate an internal management committee that sat down and came out, uh, also made up of eminent, highly qualified and experienced veterinarians. Uh, that came up with another form of recommendations for the college, which I'm happy to announce to you that council has approved those recommendations to give us that quality of college of veterinary surgeons that we see of high international standard. And some of the highlights of the recommendations that council has approved is that henceforth, uh, they are going to reduce the number of times instead of saying, since of three months, being away from your workplaces to come and stay at this uh, study centers, just sitting in classes like undergraduate students, it is going to be abolished. And we are going to have online delivery of lectures. We are also going to have, because of the traveling and the current security situation in Nigeria, as, as well as financial situations, we are also trying, we are also going to give accreditation to what we called clinical centers in every state of the federation. So wherever you are, we will identify a clinic center in that state. Give, with the requisite, I mean with the requirements for a center where you'll be able to get all the necessary trainings during your college life under the supervision of course of a, of a fellow. So you will now be attached to those centers in your place. And we have also approved award of excellence to outstanding residents. Then there we also have the practical theory ratio. Because we have, as a student, when I was a student, I was also complaining because there was too much theory, it's supposed to be in training, you are supposed to be a consultant. I remembered when I was in the college where some people would come two weeks lectures and they would condense it into two days. And we'd be having lectures from morning till night just because they want to go back to where they are coming from. It is no more accepted. And then what we are saying is that the, the, the practical theory ratio will now be sixty forty. That is sixty practical and forty theory, which most of them will be delivered online. The congregation will also be hybrid with Zoom participation. And training will now be carried out in specific areas of specialization. The next is the training of residents can be completed in, in more than one center. You can decide to go from one center to the other. There is no, we are going to be very, very flexible. And the effort to complete outstanding activities in the calendar and commencing a new session, it is going to be online. We will have more engagements so that everybody will understand the concept of our college in line with globe, global best practices, we'll have resource persons internationally from uh, international centers. We will have affiliations with other colleges across the globe like the Royal College of Veterinary Surgeons in the United Kingdom and other similar organizations. So that we can all have a feel how it is globally. We are going to arrange another interactive session with the chairman of the IMC, Professor Hassan Zouaka, where we are going to give opportunity to veterinarians on how the college is going to run. So we are now asking for you to understand with us and the patients. I know the bashing is a no, is so much, but it just reassure you of our commitment to ensure that um, um, everything in door is done in the best interests of the residents and the profession at large. So that when you come out, you say you are a consultant veterinary surgeon, a fellow of the College of Veterinary Surgeons Nigeria, you would actually justify it by the experience you pass through. We are going to have a handbook for the College of Veterinary Surgeons that is going to have all the regulations, the calendar, and we're going to strictly go with the calendar. The professor Hassan will have, will have a time to engage veterinarians whereby we will strictly discuss the running of the college and we will also have your input. So as I said, we are not rigid, it's going to be flexible, we will run the college together the way it is supposed to be run. Now, the next other very crucial issue for veterinarians and it's the, that has brought in a lot of discussions. A lot of, we are, we are reading from platforms to platforms and the concerns that you are bringing up in terms of saying that the council is calling for two continuing education programs. Um, I remember it has been a subject of discussion that the council organizes um, continuing education program maybe at some point in the year and the NVMA congress in some point, at some point in a year. And you have to travel from one place to the other, two years taking of time from your work and then the risks and the financial burden on you. And we thought it wise that we will bring forward veterinary council continuing education programs along with their NVMA so that we kill two birds with one stone. When you come for continue, when you come for NVMA congress, you can also plan that a day before the official uh, flagging of, of the NVMA congress, you can also key into your continuing education program and there is no conflict at all. So you'll be able, if you are part of the continuing education, instead of arrival date is on Monday and registration, you can arrive on Sunday and do your continued education. There is a communication gap where some people thought that we are saying that you will do double uh, continued education. Uh, it is not compulsory for you that it's not, you don't have to take two, it is not two, it is one. For those that were part of the first continuing education program, you are done and you have had your twelve points from the council. All you need is another six points from wherever you want to seek uh, the six points from, depending on your area of interest. We have already given accreditation to about um, how many, twelve service provider, continue education service providers. We have twelve of them that we have uh, publicized yeah, on all the veterinary platforms and the, and the social media handle of the Veterinary Council of Nigeria. So you can go ahead, key into it and obtain your balance of uh, six points. Also, the NVMA is a service provider. So we expect that the NVMA will also take advantage of the NVMA congress and provide that continued education program and get your points. So you attend a, a, an accredited continued education program provided by NVMA and we give you your two points. The essence here is that we want to ensure that everybody develops his skill. It is part of the mandate of council so that we are all clear about that and it has to be enforced. Veterinary practice is skill based, there is no two ways about it. You just have to develop the skills and it has to be enforced and you help us to enforce it. So um, the, the physical uh, council continuing education program that is scheduled for uh, twenty fourth of October, that is a day before the official opening of NVMA, is meant to give option for those that missed out on the first one so that it won't be like anybody is being punished because you missed that one. So we, we are now saying that you did not obtain the required points to do qualify you to have said that you have uh, attended continued education. So it's an option for those that have missed the continuing education program. So you can, those that have not, they can key into it. However, as we discussed here, we deliberated, we are very open to discussion. We are very open to uh, receiving inputs from the veterinary community. If we think we have taken decision and you think you have better options, we do not know it's all. So you can let us know because I have seen a lot of uh, issues being raised on that, we've noticed it. People are saying that, oh, you can decide not to register. Of course, you can decide that is saying that you are against uh, the Veterinary Surgeons Act, which is the act of the uh, uh, that is approved acts of the uh, 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 of the national assembly that because it is your council. And I know that with this huge response each time council calls you, there is that response. We know that we enjoy a lot of goodwill and support from the entire veterinary community. You are aware that um, the annual practicing license, national practicing license, we have had these first samples, we are just waiting for the honorable minister, which I'm, whom I'm going to see next week uh, with some members of council for him to give us a date to officially launch the national veterinary license. Now we are going to take our license as a driver's license where it has a barcode and we can confirm, you can just take a screenshot and it will show whether, when is your license experiencing. And we'll top that with heavy, heavy publicity to our clients who are those that enjoy our service to tell them that the only way to identify you that is a genuine veterinarian, is a veterinary surgeon is by presenting his national veterinary license. And as we said, I'm sure you have seen it on our handle, that the Veterinary Council of Nigeria has also approved a veterinary seal. Just like you see it on the architects when they do their drawings. What authenticates the drawing of an architect or a lawyer's uh, report is the seal with which carries, which is going to carry our V C N number. So if it is a veterinary certificate, you must put the seal that carries your name or that carries your V C N number. So no quack will copy it, it is highly uh, secured. So it is only unless if you give your seal to somebody to use. So we will now start catching all those quacks because you will not have, they will not have access to our seal. So if you say that a vet gave you a certificate, as a matter of right, we will demand that you show us that certificate and it would, it must have the seal of a veterinarian. So it means that if you are not registered with council, you do, you do not have a current practicing license, you will not also have the seal. And if you don't have it, it means that whatever you sign, it will not be accepted as being signed by a registered veterinarian. So I think, and I believe that Miniti is very worried about the uh, incessant uh, uh, activities of quacks. And these are some of ways that we have, we are going to screen them out. So you have to help us to help you or to help the entire veterinary community. Recently, we have also been faced with challenge, problems of veterinarians fighting about uh, uh, areas of location of veterinary practice premises. Where we were faced, especially in river state and some other states of the federation where the veterinarians now will come and cite their practices very close to each other. There is supposed to be a time and at this 114th regular council meeting, council has given approval that the minimum distance from one vet to the other, minimum is three hundred meters. Other states can say they want to extend it, it is free, but the minimum, you cannot have that, okay. We had a professor that say, is it linear or radial? So the council is saying it is minimal three hundred radial distance. All around, we cannot have two vets operating within three hundred radial distance of each other. So these are some of the um, the decisions. Uh, areas, okay, the chairman here is also reminding me, reminding me of location citing veterinary practice in a shopping area. It is unacceptable and the council is now bringing our regulation. We cannot register any veterinary outfit that you go and register in a commercial area, in a shopping complex, inside market, inside motor park. It is not acceptable, council has approved that it will no longer register any premises that is cited there. And so also, you have seen geomapping of all our registered veterinary practices. The pilot scheme started in the federal capital territory, which is also going to be launched by the honorable minister of agriculture. And then we expect that all these, all states will key into it and all registered veterinary premises will be geomapped. While you come, yesterday when they did a display, I can sit here on a screen, I am seeing every, everywhere that I click, I can know exactly where a veterinary clinic is located. And then depending on the color that comes on, if it is red, if it is green, it means that it is registered. If it comes red, yes, it is an illegal veterinary outfit, or it is not a registered one and we can actually go directly to that veterinary center. So those are the things because I have read it also that they said the veterinary community want to be updated from time to time on activities of council. So we want to assure you that henceforth, all major decisions that are taken by your council will be shared with you and you will be taking along and your recommendations or observations will be, will be used to guide council decisions. With this, I want to once again, on behalf of council, thank you most sincerely for your understanding, for your support to uh, to the board to ensuring that we provide the best services for you in the country. Thank you, uh, the floor is open for question. I don't know how fame is going to moderate the question and answer session, but we will give room for comments and questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam President. So first of all is to apologize that the room has been filled. The recordings for all these sessions will be provided and shared across all veterinary platforms. So Madam President, if you will, uh, there are a lot of questions on the chat. I will just read out those.
Understand that the space is not much, a lot of people want to come in.
The space has been full for, for, for a long time now, now. So Madam President, I will just be reading out quickly the questions and if you don't mind for brevity of time and so that we're able to also take most of the questions. I would want us to just strictly just go straight into the answer and have uh, uh, a lot more questions answered. Somebody asked, Usman Usa, is a vet, is, is a vet program captured in the C P E? Uh, are they C E providers and how do we answer that?
Yes, F A O is, I think we can have a list, can I have a list? We can read out the list of the continuing education uh, service providers.
So we've been, uh, I think it has been circulated on veterinary platforms. We will, we will equally be circulating more, uh, if you need that, we will make it official and put it on the council letter headed paper so that you can have more. Alright, so we'll get that, while we're getting that, I want us to attend to other questions. Somebody said, what if I decide, Madam President, what if I decide to take continued education from schools abroad or international organization, how does this count?
Thank you very much. The service providers for Nigeria for now, we have M S A Veterinary Medical Diagnostics, we have Vet Act Limited, we have Ambu Vet Consultants, we have Pet Smart Limited, we have NVMA, we have Farm Alert, we have Savan, we have Vets, uh, we have F A O and we have Nigerian Aqua, Aquatic Veterinary Forum. And then the international one, we are also, as I said, we will uh, give accreditation to international communities, but you can assign uh, uh, a particular uh, organization just like that without them showing interest. So we are trying to collaborate, at least downward, we have the Commonwealth Veterinary Association President with us as a member of council. We also have Dr. Gani, who has been a councilor on uh, uh, World Veterinary Association and a host of others. So they are getting across like Savan already is an international uh, is an affiliation of an international association. So that's a small animal veterinary association. So Savan is a subsidiary of an international body, if you go on Savan, you, of course you get. So once that particular uh, association or body is affiliated with council, of course, why not? We can do that, thank you. But maybe the chairman can add, do you think that any, the chairman here is, uh, continuing education is here?
I think what I would love the chairman to answer is uh, M V R I is not captured. Uh, maybe you should share more light on how this organization was selected and if there's going to be any update, what should we do?
Thank you. But the president said with respect to accreditation of uh, certificates of attendance from foreign bodies, uh, foreign organization. Thank you. If you attend any C P D from a foreign organization, please submit your certificate to the secretary of Veterinary Council. They will pass it on to the committee for verification and then we would appoint, we will assign what we consider to be equivalent credit units for you. On the M V R I not being part of the twelve presently accredited private C P D providers, um, you will recall that since March last year, we called for expression of interest publicly and organizations applied. These applications were screened and the twelve you have were just those who passed through the crucibles and then they were accredited. But on that, yes, so M V R I did not apply, express interest yet. Anytime they indicate interest in provision of C P Ds, we would also look through the application and the veterinary council will give approvals. I think that's just about it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think uh,
Thank you.
We, the emphasis is that if you know any organization who is interested, applications can still be received and it will be screened. Now this, I guess this is a young vet saying that they have no job. Doesn't mean that if they can uh, attend this continuing education, there won't be any renewal of law. Doesn't mean that if they can uh attend this continued education, there won't be any renewal of license from them. What's their fate, Madam President?
See, I, I don't want to um sound insensitive. But I also always believe, believe that as a vet, there is no way you can, yes, of course, it depends on where you are looking for the job. Um of course, there is issue of uh recruitment, that government has suspended recruitment and there are a lot of issues. But if we are going into private, honestly, I don't want to believe that the vet will finish and you will not have anything to do at all. The current, the annual practicing license is five thousand, a ten thousand. So in one year, to justify being called a doctor, uh I, I, I think, I don't think it's much, ten thousand naira. I don't think it's much. If you look at other professionals, to maintain your license, for you to spend six years O plus X in a veterinary school and come out and say you cannot pay ten thousand naira to maintain yourself in that register. I think I don't want to believe that you cannot find something either privately, at least privately to do. For vet, we have a lot of large animal practice, small animal practice, and so on and so forth, honestly. Young, young, young vets are really doing a lot these days. Honestly, they have a lot of initiative.
Thank you, Madam President, we have over forty questions, I'm just wondering how well we can go with these questions. As somebody is asking, the C P D for N V M A Congress, how does it count, how does it work?
Um see, N V M A is part of C P D providers. They have presented their paper, I guess, because I'm not part of that committee, but at least they have been given accreditation. And it is two points. They have many opportunities, okay, wait, let the chap, the continuing education answer this question, please.
Thank you, President. The N V M A, uh we've seen their program. They have very many platforms to, to allow those who participate in the programs to earn points. We have about three panelist sessions. Each of those panelist sessions can attract C P D points. All they need to do is to publicize this program very well. And allow people, the N V M A will now submit this record to the council. And those people who have attended those programs will qualify for points, so we can if you have full participation in all the programs of N V M A. But they have to inform council of those programs that they have, that can, that can grant the points to their attendees.
Okay, I, I think that so far that answers it, so the service providers should be up and doing, if they came to council, apply that they.
Alright, someone asked.
Can you please apologize for this?
We need to quickly just apologize for the loss of audio, we are trying to ensure that things run smoothly. Uh back to the question, Madam President, if you will. Someone is asking, can eighteen, can the eighteen required points begin from other registered C P D providers or is it important that the council uh C E has to be part of the eighteen points?
Um yes, uh and about the points. Because see, the, the responsibility of the council is uh ensuring this knowledge, we are the service providers, we have just been, this council has just been uh magnanimous and trying to open up the, the, the space so that we have opportunity. Because the idea for this point system and I keep telling, saying, telling that is deregularization of the um continuing education program, so that we give opportunity. Because there are people, sometimes you don't have much interest in everything that comes to those. And you have an interest in small animal medicine, small animal surgery, outpatient medicine or whatever. So council will provide services, but that one particular um continuing education provided by council is mandatory, that you must attend one continuing education program that is organized by council. Once you get that point, the other points, you have an option, even council can organize some other site uh training programs, maybe in collaboration with some other agencies, we can provide, we can advertise. Those ones are not compulsory, but if you have interest in it, you can join and get on your point. But one that is going to be announced, that is the one compulsory uh continuing education program organized by council, that one is get it from any of the service providers.
Alright, somebody is asking, thank you, Madam President, must we be present in person for the next C E? I think the answer to that is clearly no, it's hybrid.
It's hybrid, even the next one, the next continuing education program, if you miss the one compulsory one that we had in June, in July, then you can attend this one that is happening in Oyo, either physically or virtually. You can attend, it will still earn you your points. That in the, in the, in the circumstance that you are not attending the N V M A Congress. If you are attending the N V M A Congress, it will be nice for you to attend physically, but it's hybrid.
Someone is asking, Madam President, why, that, why don't we do this gradually? Isn't this too sudden?
What is sudden, I don't know, is it the point or what? The point have been going on for the past two years, since inception, two, this is the third year. We have been advertising it since last year, but there has to be a time for us to implement it. So it has been going on, we have been, in fact, we have been doing the publicity since inception and it was one we do want to deregularize, we want to do the point system all over the world, for those that attend international conferences. You know that everything is about points. I have attended series of also international conferences where they will say it's equivalent to so, so, so points. So Nigeria should be able to move, the veterinary council should be able to move with its international counterpart that when we go for this international conference and it has points, we bring back to your council and you earn points. In fact, we are also trying to see how we can get these units towards the College of Veterinary Surgeons. That is one of the thinking, that if you go for a particular training in surgery, let's say in the UK, hands on, and it is a credit unit towards training, you come and it can be unit. If it's in that film. And so let us make Yeah, that means you are not here. Okay, so as, as, as I was saying, the topics for the July on and the one now in October are different. So there's nothing, it will not kill you to have an additional knowledge as a vet, it can only help you to develop yourself. So twelve plus twelve is twenty four point, a bit thirty two, twenty four points. So you end up with twenty four points, I don't know whether there is carryover, if you take too much, no, 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 not carryover. Too much, I'm asking the chairman, if I can add points, maybe I can carry it for twenty twenty. Roll over, okay, thank you. Alright, next question.
Someone is asking, can the amount be please reduced to five thousand?
You see, uh um you see, let me, when, when you are doing virtual, expenditure for providing a virtual is completely different from providing physical uh appearance. For instance, the, our resource persons that came virtually, they were just virtual, sitting in their homes. We are not paying for their transport allowance or we are not accommodating them. Only thing we paid them is honorarium. But in this circumstance, they will come physically, we will pay for their tickets, we will pay for their accommodation and we also in addition give honorarium. And when we have the physical, the virtual, I'm sure we didn't give you tea break, there was no lunch. So when you come to Oyo and you are sitting there, there's no way we no tea break and lunch. So these ones all come with extra charges. Of course, you understand the other logistics that are being involved, other people are going to be moved to that place. And so um those are just the, the call, um some of the explanations.
Alright, uh thank you, Madam President, I'm avoiding reading out other questions.
Yeah, okay, sorry, in fact, I'm just, my attention is drawn, I think we for continued education, as, yes, fifteen thousand naira for continued education and then you will travel, that's five years ago. And you will travel from your state with the risk and the expenditure for transportation. You will accommodate yourself and you still pay council fifteen thousand naira. Since this council came on board, I think the maximum we have had was five thousand. Three thousand for early births and five thousand for, for late. And even now, what is the rate now? It's just ten thousand. For the, for, for hybrid, it's ten thousand. So I think honestly, looking at the times, you know that uh council is highly subsidizing it because we also have to meet some of these demands. So ten thousand, I, I think honestly, you should be able to say that council, you have really done well. Because people are upgrading, increasing charges. From fifteen thousand in five years ago, we are now brought it to ten thousand physical V V C and continuing education, uh I think we have, we have done more than, more than enough, honestly.
Madam President, someone is asking, regulating the prices charged by other C P D providers? Is the council doing any of such?
Uh honestly, we cannot say like we will regulate, even without uh without council partnering with their own education program and a lot of veterinarians key into it. So we are just more worried with the quality of what they are giving us and to give you the opportunity to do what you ordinarily will have done without being rewarded. So you now do your training as if you have been doing it before, because I know a lot of people have seen them of Farm Alert training, I've seen them on Vet Act training, I've seen them on Ambu Vets and so many other training. Some of these trainings also like F A O, I know they will not charge anything. But we have given them accreditation because they are coming with a lot of, of training programs. So some of these training are actually interventions, so they are free. Because like Ambu Vets, they have a lot of uh partners that, that, that do training program on, for them. So if you join, it's for Ambu Vet and it is accredited, you get your points and get you free. But if you arrange with them, the only thing is that we are giving you the opportunity that when, even when you do your own private one from these people, that we are giving you points for it. So we didn't, to be honest, we didn't really go into um into discussion of how much they would charge. I know there are some big boys like Savan, when they are doing their conferences, even without us giving points. Veterinarians were paying two hundred and fifty, Abby? No, you know, veterinarians, yes, they were paying two hundred and fifty thousand naira to attend Savan uh conference, uh training program. Even five hundred, see, Dr. Tini is telling me some veterinarians are paying five hundred to go on Savan. And now we are saying, after paying, we are still giving you points that you have attended. So I think most of them is just their own persons, they can arrange the way they want, their associations, members of Savan that will want, and if they finish, we give them points for it.
Alright, thank you, Madam President, two more questions, then I can divert to uh some other questions I see on the group chat. Please, if someone took in the last episode twenty twenty one, hope it counts for A P L for twenty twenty three.
No, not at all, you don't, you don't, I give points retrospectively.
So somebody is asking, N V M A state chapters, can they, are they also free to organize their own C E?
If they, if they write to council and we look at the content of their, their training, because we will not compromise on the content. If they present to us the content of what they are, they are providing.
Yeah, but, yeah, yeah, okay, uh but they are N D M A, uh local branch, I think they can take advantage of the N V M A, the national, because already the national body has been given accreditation, so they can use N D M A approver to, to provide the service under the Nigeria, not as a local chapter. But they can use the name of N D M A and do it, so they already have an approval to do that. As long as we see that the content is okay. If there are other person, other areas, please let us deal with them, like those issues that we have, uh we have talked about, so that people will be able to clear the doubts of veterinarians, we want to be on the same page with our veterinary colleagues outside.
Okay, so I think the final one on C E, most academics have been, have not been paid for the past eight months. Uh so how do we resolve this, how many will be able to pay for the conference? Is there any provisions for lecturers who have not been paid for a while?
Uh this, this matter has been thoroughly discussed in council. As you are aware, all the directors, all the deans of the faculties of veterinary medicine in Nigeria are statutory members of council. So they are also part of the ASU and they have brought the issue and we have found a way to resolve it. I think there was a time that it was also resolved, uh they, they, they did it, I think there's a way they did it, did they loan or something? Yeah, they will pay later, they will attend the congress, their certificates will not be given, when they take their money, they will pay, we know they are creditworthy. So they will pay through their dean, their dean will certify them, they will sit, they will do their continued education and their dean will make sure that the money is paid to council, as you are aware, we are running, we have a lot of issues financially. Everybody, government is reducing the cost of governance and our budget is nothing to write home about. So we will not be able to run the program for free.
Thank you, Madam President, so we'll just take a little diversion from what we've been talking about.
It's only diversion, it is a subject matter that.
Yep, that we started with in the morning, uh this evening, when you started your discussion, apologies for that. Also pertaining to the distance between premises, that's about practice premise. It seems the committee does not consider the difference in services being provided as it sounds as do a veterinary pharmacy. It seems the committee does not consider the difference in services being provided as it sounds as do a veterinary pharmacy. Most of our observe the same distance as a vet clinic and the like. What's the way out, Madam President? Will you want to provide?
Okay, thank you very much. In fact, this matter was brought up because the initial recommendation from the committee was that veterinary premises. And it was very clear, we remove premises and veterinary clinics and hospitals cannot be in the same place within three hundred radial distance. So we have also looked at the area section whereby a hospital can be there and a, a vet. Uh, they can be within the same location. What we don't want to see is two veterinary clinics or veterinary hospitals in the same area. So it is, council is very aware of this.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, somebody is asking, just a moment, let me get this question clearly.
Sorry?
Just a moment, Madam President.
It seems we are having. Okay, go ahead, please.
Yes, Madam President.
To present.
Handbook that uh at the point of registration, it is going to be one of the things that would be given to you, to the students. Resident, yes.
Madam President.
Madam President, somebody asked a very, uh, I want to go back to the C E question. There was a penalty for not achieving the C E points. I think, I think we need to consider that.
We don't want to go there. You just get your points and you get your license. Because see, you are asking us to fight squacks. And we have to just fight them. You have to help us to help the community, the veterinary community. You have to. So we also, we also want to be very strong that veterinarians should be able to be updating their skills. Veterinary my profession is a skill-based profession. You don't sit at home, maybe our medical counterpart, if you see them all the time, you see them with books, reading, updating. Because eh, eh medicine is dynamic. So you can't sit down and not update yourself. And, and you want to insist that council should give you annual practicing license. Please be encouraged now and that is why we are making it more flexible, more user friendly that we are doing hybrid training program. We are doing eh at your own time, you can make up for twelve months. You walk around, you look at all these training programs, the, instead of just attending random ones, you look at those you are interested and you see that it has um, it has points. All you need to do is to buy data, connect, join and you listen and you get your points. I don't think there's anything difficult during our time, we will travel all the way, maybe from Abuja to Sokoto. They say that's where the northern one is or the southern one is in Portacot. You still have to travel. So, so please, let us, let us, let us eh eh eh. And positive changes to make life easy for all of us so that just to make sure that we comply with. Because we are where we, veterinarians should be law-abiding. We don't want to be given all the time, you want option of not abiding by the law. What is the option for not obeying the rule? What is the option for that? So I mean, you don't ask for option for breaking law.
Somebody asks, Madam President, will this also apply to foreign crafty practitioners?
Which one is foreign, they are foreigners? Yes. Yes, foreign practitioners, yes. As long as you are foreign, because we have been doing exam, last year we did examination for about, how many of them? About seven foreign veterinarians, they sat down for the College of Veterinary Surgeons examination, they passed. And I'm telling you, if you see this celebration, the way they are so happy to register in Nigeria. And they also need to re, to, to, to revalidate their, their registration, they know it and they know the guidelines. So they follow it. It's, it's the same thing though.
For time, Madam President, I think we'll just take three more questions. What's the importance of paravets earning points on the C E programs?
What is the, what?
Importance of paravets earning points in our programs.
Okay, now let us go back to this issue of paravet. You know, I have been advocating for this paravet. You, you see, we are having misconceptions so as veterinarians. We think that this veterinary space, the animal health space is only meant for veterinarians. I think that is a very bad conception or perspective or perception. I don't even know which, which is the correct adjective to use. The ve, animal health industry is not made veterinarians alone. Okay, I keep giving this example time and time again. When you go to the hospital, human hospital, you are sick. How many professionals do you interact with before you finally get your treatment? Let's start from as you are entering the gate, leave the gate man and start from the medical record people. You have a medical record people, they are also professionals in the medical industry. The doctors do not do registration. We, now we be medical record. We, now we be not, now we, we, now. I mean, we are the pharmacies, we are everything. It doesn't work that way anywhere in the world. If you to be part of the internet, global best, global best practice, the, the, the work of everybody is, 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 is well spelled out. So in the human medical, medical hospital, you go off first contact is the medical code here, they register you, they open a card for you, you pick card, you go. Instead, you go to the nursing station, the nurse will collect that card, they file, take vital parameters. Take your weight and everything. You tell you, Oga, please sit down. I'll carry you a car, eh, eh, file to the consulting room. He gives the doctor, you come and see the doctor. You, he, he, he takes the history and everything, makes it a tentative diagnosis. If you need a, a, a diagnosis, I mean, um, eh laboratory examination, he means it, you go to the lab. You go eh, eh, meet eh, eh, a laboratory scientist in the lab. He take, I think maybe you need injection or even it's a wound management, you go to the nursing station. They, they, they clean the wound for you. If you need an X-ray, you go and meet a radiographer who is also another trend personnel. If you need ultrasound, you go and give me the ultrasound sonographer and that is how it works. If you need medication, you go to the pharmacy section and you meet a pharmacist in that hospital. It is not everywhere you go to lab, you see eh, eh, human doctor. You go to radiology, you meet human doctor, you go to, you meet everyone. But in we have consistently refused to accept other people in this thing and that is what is bringing this fight. I keep telling people, some people went to school, they read eh, eh, O N D H N D. In other space, in other one, they call them veterinary nurses. And when you go, they know their limits and because we have not sat down to come up with a standard operating procedure to say that this is where you are limited, you cannot do this and we give them the job. No, we will be cleaning, we will go and do fumigation. We will bath the dog, we will shave, we will do, we will ride the, eh, the, the, we will be the one to be filling the record. We will clean the wound, we will be the one to, everything is about the vet. Honestly, we have to take, change our perception about running this animal healthcare system and accommodate everybody. Now they are asking, they are, and that is why they have been asking to have their own regulatory body and we kept stopping it. They even went behind the door the other time, they almost signed their regulatory eh, eh body. And I tell you, that will have been the biggest doom for this, for this profession. We stopped it also. So if we want them to be regulated by the Veterinary Council of Nigeria, we have to give them specified duties. Now, when you open a hospital, there has to be a veterinary para-professional, that is your nurse, that when it is fumigation, please, for God's sake, you are a doctor. Put your, must you go and start bathing a dog? Give them the work to do so that they know it's their work. So please, and we need to also register them and we need to train them as well. We regulate their training, that is why we include them in our community, eh, in our continuing education program. And even during the end of congress, we should be able to carry them along. That is the problem. So please, we need to engage them for that, we need to carry them along. When you open a hospital, e-employ them and give them responsibilities commensurate to their own level of training. That is the only way forward and that is the only way we can stop them from infringing into our own space. Otherwise, they'll go and do surgery.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. I think just two more questions before we allow the chairman, Continue Education, to officially tell people that they need to register for the physical continuing education. And that's on the issue of college, the issue of restructuring the College of Veterinary Surgeons shouldn't stop students who have invested time and resources from graduating. What will you say about that, Madam President?
I want to say, as I, as I said earlier, to repeat again that eh, on behalf of council, I want to sincerely apologize for this delay, but it's in the good of uh, um, the entire profession. We are, we also, I don't want to go deep into so many things. We have had challenges. Let me open up, we have had challenges as a council in term of our administration, we have had challenges with the, with the.
Back in terms of eh, of, of exercising our own responsibilities. And that is why uh, would they have refused to implement some of the things that council have said they are implementing. But these are in-house and administrative and we are sure we're going to resolve it. So I'm sure you must have heard of the grapevine. We have people here that have, that are, that are sitting in council and they don't have eh, they feel that they don't, they, they are not under the council and they are not implementing what council has approved. In a nutshell, that's what I want to say. I don't want to go deep into it. We are handling it and I can assure you that as you can see, and that is why because of the small talks that are going around, so people believe that they can store the activities of council. They can, they can stop us from implementing all the good things I want on, on fair for veterinary community. Uh, we have shown them that the council must sit and that is why we are sitting today, we started sitting yesterday and today. And we are taking decision as a council, as, as one house on the direction we are going to go. Because to be fair to the chairman of the I M C with his team, they have come up with these recommendations months back. So months back, if council has sat and we have given these approvals like this months that they have, by now the school will have been running. But as I said, there are people that have deliberately put all the necessary things in that eh, in order to, to sabotage all the efforts of the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, somebody is asking, how do I pay and then sharing the timetable for C E? All those details will be circulated across the various platforms you saw this link share. Uh, on the final notes, Madam President, I just want you to give some reassurance. But maybe that will be after the chairman of continuing education must have also uh passionately invite all veterinarians who didn't join the first C E or who have not really decided how to.
Reporting in progress.
To present and does that charity, what obtains elsewhere. It's not just by wishing it, we should do it, we can do it. We have made it very convenient that during the enemy congress, uh, you use ones to do Q two B as the president said. We have a local organizing committee headed by the dean of Faculty of Veterinary Medicine U I, Professor Lou from Peola Davis and her team. They will host us and we will have a very presentable continuing educational program. We welcome you, we're ready to receive you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chairman. Doctor Bimba, that's said very well articulated by the president of the Veterinary Council. And you have also recognized and regulated all para-veterinary professionals and considered them a seat in the council. We should be one family working together for animal health and animal welfare. Madam President, a lot of time, I want to thank the veterinary community.
Something, please.
Okay, want to thank the veterinary community for joining at a quick notice. Madam President, if you have a final word for veterinarians listening, eh, it would be an appropriate time to do that now, ma. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, once again, on behalf of council. Um. This overwhelming impronto eh, call at the very short time shows that the entire veterinary community is with the council. Want to reassure you that with you, with your support, together we will want to reiterate our commitment to moving this profession to the highest level in line with international best practice. Please, um, give all the necessities, continue to support the council and ignore all those that want to distract uh us from the path of progress whatsoever they are. The council is still united despite a little few distractions, is still united, one family that is committed to all the promises that we have made to the veterinary commis, uh, um, community to deliver on the promises that we have made to you to give you the and I keep saying that um, the council is open. Please reach out to us if that you want to see changes, please do not hesitate to draw our attention to it. And I keep saying it is not through uh discussions around on platforms. Sometimes we're also busy, maybe we're not even on that platform and it gets lost in the crowd. So many this uh discussions. Sometimes I need to call Dr. Femi and say, as the chairman publicity, please, there's a discussion that is, that needs council attention. But that is not how government work, that is not how offices work. If you feel that there's something you need to offer, please you can go ahead and write to council. It will be presented at council. It will be presented at council meetings like this, it will be deliberated and will look the merits and demeals. And if we think it is in the interest of the profession, of course, the council will adopt it and approve it and make sure it is being implemented. So um we look forward to working together to improving uh veterinary practice in Nigeria. As I said, we are a united family, we do not allow distractors to distract us from our goals. Thank you and have a very wonderful weekend.
Thank you, Madam President. So and so on this note, thank you, thank you. On this note, we'll bring it close to this emergency council meeting. We rest assured that the summary of all Madam President that we fondly call Madam Capacity as said, will be related to us officially in a bulletin. And then, of course, all of us will be carried along on the proceedings of the council. I want to also lastly encourage everyone of us who have not registered for the C E to kindly do so to avoid last minute, last minute rush. I look forward to seeing all of us in the burden and then to the M V M A preparing for the congress. Please accept the council's best wishes. See you all in the burden. Thank you, everyone, and do have a pleasant evening.